Here's meeting of Board of Zoning Appeals called to order today, July the fifteenth, twenty twenty five, at six P M. Got a roll call, please?
Dean, here, Davis.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Chris Dennis, not here, Phil and Danny.
Here. Have a motion to approve the minutes of June third, twenty twenty five meeting.
Motion will be approved.
We have a motion, can you hear it, second?
Second.
We have a second, can we have a vote?
Dean?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Phil and Danny?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, tonight, we're here to hear considered appeal by Charles Bennett, Erie County Prosecutor. But before we start that, we received a letter requesting dismissal of this hearing entirely. It came through Dennis O'Toole. I'll read the letter, it's quite long, so bear with me. Before we even start that, too, is we're going to maintain property form, okay? And it's not open to the public. The only person speaking are Mr. Bennett. Are you representing Dennis?
I am with Bennett's partners, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay, and any witnesses that you folks will have, okay? Now, that's the first part of the meeting here, okay? So, the letter is, this is very honorable board members, I'm ready to introduce myself, Dennis O'Toole, my law firm, as legal counsel for Robert Dunn and Jessica Dunn, who reside in township at one twenty eight oh nine Cherry Road, Vermillion, Ohio. His firm has been provided with a copy of zoning inspector Joe Baxter's May sixteenth, twenty twenty five decision of the Dunn property as agricultural. Requires no storm permit or action. In addition, we have provided with a copy of the notice of appeal filed on June sixth, twenty twenty five by Assistant County Prosecutor Charles Bennett, reportedly on behalf of the Erie County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Trustees of the Vermillion Township. We are ready to address his numerous significant problems with the notice of appeal to request an immediate dismissal of the appeal. Ohio Revised Code, section five nineteen point one five, and the Vermillion Township zoning resolution seven point one apply to the present appeal. In relevant part, O R C, Ohio Revised Code, section five nineteen point one five, provides as follows. That appeals to the Board of Zoning Appeals may be taken by any person aggrieved or by any officer of the township affected by any decision of the administrative office officer. Such appeal shall be taken from within twenty, twenty days after the decision by filing with the officer from whom the appeal is taken and with the Board of Zoning Appeals a notice of appeal specifying the grounds. Okay, number one, this appeal must be, or the appeal must be dismissed as it was not timely filed. Foremost, the appeal before this board is untimely as it was not filed within twenty days of the decision. The decision by zoning inspector Baxter occurred on May sixteenth, twenty twenty five. The deadline for the appeal was honored before June fifth, twenty twenty five. Assistant prosecuting attorney Bennett filed the appeal on June sixth, twenty twenty five. Accordingly, the appeal was not timely filed and is not properly before this honorable board. The appeal must be, section two here, or number two is, the appeal must be dismissed as neither the county commissioners nor the Board of Trustees of the Vermillion Township had standing to commence this appeal. Next, the Erie County Board of Commissioners nor the Board of Trustees of Vermillion Township had standing to appeal this honorable board, the decision to appeal to this honorable board, the decision that would be telling township zoning inspector. The notice of appeal states that the appeal is taken on behalf of both the Board of Erie County Commissioners and the Board of Trustees of Vermillion Township pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section five nineteen point one five. A Board of County Commissioners does not have the standing to appeal a township zoning decision to the Appeal Board of Zoning Appeals, only an officer of the township has standing to appeal. To this extent, there is any question of ambiguity in the aforementioned Revised Code section in Perry Township, this is a case, case law here. Perry Township Board of Trustees versus Franklin City Board of Zoning Appeals, tenth district, nineteen eighty three. The tenth appellate district addressed the issue of standing to appeal from a decision from a zoning official. The appellate court commenced its analysis by stating that appeals to a board, to a Board of Zoning Appeals are a creature of the statute created government and limited by statute. The court stated that the general rule is that the absence of constitutional or statutory authority, there is no inherent right to appeal from the order of an administrative agency. The court went on to state that if O R C's section three oh three point one five township officials do not have the right to appeal a zoning decision of a county official to a county Board of Zoning Appeals. Likewise, the court held that the express language of the O R C five nineteen point one five does not vest the county officials with the authority to appeal a township zoning inspector's decisions to a township Board of Zoning Appeals, to wit. The tenth appellate district obviously, stated obviously, under the statute, county officers would not have standing to appeal. Told you as well. Thus, it is clear that the Erie County Commissioners do not have standing to appeal. Likewise, the Board of Township Trustees did not have standing to file this appeal. While a township officer may have standing to appeal, the Board of Township Trustees does not have standing to appeal a decision of a township officer in appointed. Pursuant to O R C five nineteen point one six, the Board of Township Trustees appointed Joe Baxter, zoning inspector for Vermillion Township. Mr. Baxter, the chief. Thank you. Mr. Baxter is the chief zoning official tasked by the Board of Township Trustees with enforcing the zoning code. The appointing body, the Board of Township Trustees, does not have the authority to appeal a decision of the very township official in appointed to carry out the task at hand. To this end, in Casper versus Corey, again, we have case law nineteen ninety, the Ohio Supreme Court expressly found that a Board of Trustees, a Board of Township Trustees did not have the authority to appeal to the Court of Common Pleas a decision of the Township Board of Zoning Appeals. In reaching the conclusion, Ohio Supreme Court stated as follows. There is no question that the R C, the R C, Revised Code, chapter five nineteen, and trustee of the county, township trustees, with protecting the public health, safety, and morals. Nonetheless, the appellate's responsibility to protect the public interest is not authorized, does not authorize it to act as a representative of the public for the purpose of opposing the decision that had empowered the Board of Zoning Appeals to make on the appellate's behalf. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a creature of the township trustees. For the most part, the Board of Zoning Appeals is created to provide a property owner with an administrative review. Oftentimes, the review involves a property owner who either, who either requests a variance from the terms of a zoning resolution or seeks review from a decision of administrative official. To allow administrative officials the right to attack the actions of their superior or the decision for which the officials had empowered the Board of Zoning Appeals to make on their behalf would defeat the purpose of which the Board of Zoning Appeals was created. We are statutory board brought about by the O R C enforcement, by the way. This holding applies deeply to a decision of a township zoning inspector. The inspector acts as appointed zoning official and by the township trust, and of, and by the township trustees. The trustees appointed Mr. Baxter to interpret and enforce township zoning resolutions. The trustees cannot oppose and appeal the decision of Mr. Baxter for making the decisions of the trustees, making a decision the trustees empowered, tasked, and authorized him for making the first instance. As clearly noted by the Ohio Supreme Court, the township Board of Trustees must not be legally pitted against those boards, boards, and officials it has created. Accordingly, the Board of Township Trustees did not have standing to commence this appeal. Moreover, the existence of this appeal on behalf of the Board of Township Trustees raises a looming question of whether the Board of Township Trustees even authorized the filing of this appeal. Assuming, arguendo, the, that the Board of Township Trustees had standing to appeal, which it doesn't, there is no evidence the Board of Township Trustees directed or requested the Assistant County Prosecutor to commence this appeal on its behalf. O R section three oh three point oh nine declares that the county prosecuting attorney to be the legal advisor for the township. However, for the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney to have, to have commenced, this appeal requires either the request or direction from the Board of Township Trustees, and you can see Volker versus Schlichter, another case study, gold district nineteen eighty six. The Board of Township Trustee meeting minutes are void of any evidence that this appeal was requested or authorized by the Board of Township Trustees. There is no resolution by the Board of Township Trustees authorizing this appeal. Therefore, again, this appeal was not properly commenced. For all of the foregoing reasons, this appeal is not properly before this honorable board, and Robert and Jessica Dunn respectfully request that it be dismissed. Very truly yours, Scott J. Corr.
Oh, really?
Oh, really? Okay, now, we have this, all right? Can I have you step to the podium so we can kind of, yeah?
Yes.
You're representing this letter also, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I authored that letter.
Now, I won't have to, I won't have to swear, but you've got your officer of the court, so, you know, you don't need to be sworn in. And neither are you, no. Okay, could you kind of go through this and kind of like explain it in layman's terms?
Absolutely, absolutely. Foremost, I would say, in my opinion, it seems like this board may be caught in the crossfire. There is pending litigation in Court of Common Pleas. A Kiahoga County judge has been appointed to overhear that case. And it appears that, that maybe the Board of Zoning Appeals is caught up in the crossfire on this. And that's part of the reason why we've asked for it to be dismissed. Mr. Baxter is the chief zoning official for the township. This is a township issue, this is a township zoning issue. Under resolution four point one one of Vermillion Township, the trustees appoint Mr. Baxter to interpret and to enforce the zoning code. Under that section, the trustees have absolutely no authority to interpret or enforce the zoning provisions, provisions. That's Mr. Baxter's authority, exclusively his authority. He's made the decision that this property is agricultural property, it's not subject to the zoning laws. And by the way, he's absolutely correct. We've mitigated this issue multiple times in both different townships and as well at the county level, he's a hundred percent correct on that. So, the issue then is, who has the right to appeal? Can an aggrieved neighbor or property owner appeal? Absolutely. Could the township treasurer appeal as an official of the township? Yes. Could the township administrator appeal? Yes. But can the Board of Township Trustees, who delegated Mr. Baxter with his authority, can they appeal the decision that he's empowered or tasked to carry out? And the question, and the answer to that question is no. They can't give Mr. Baxter the authority to make a decision and then say, well, we're going to appeal the very decision we told you to no man. So that's why we're requesting this dismissal. And then, I guess, to a couple of other issues, it's very, very clear the county does not have the authority to appeal. This is a township issue. So, the county is not involved in whether to appeal a township zoning issue determined by the zoning inspector. That's, we can't, you cannot go appeal a decision by the county zoning inspector to the county Board of Zoning Appeals anymore than the county can come in here and. And then, apart, just, I guess, one step beyond the letter. I just want to point out that there's a very, very focus. The notice of appeal is limited to the issue of whether or not Mr. Baxter's decision, whether he's empowered to make that decision, given the fact that there's, that there's litigation in the county. And he is, he's empowered, I mean, this is his authority as the zoning inspector. He has the right to make ongoing decisions about, about the zoning. And the fact that this is in litigation in the county doesn't change that. So, if we get to that issue on appeal, I want to point out that it is a very, very narrow issue on appeal. Mr. Bennett has not challenged his decision. He has not said, hey, the decision's wrong, this is not agricultural property. He said, he does not have the right to make this decision because of the pending county litigation.
Any questions on board?
What, could you explain, what is, what is the other litigation that's pending here? I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, so, there, in twenty twenty four, your, the, the Board of Township Trustees issued a zoning citation saying that Dunn's modified the property without proper site plan, without building permits. And that's the issue that Mr. Baxter revisited and said, hey, wait a second, this property is exempt because it's agricultural. And so, that is one of the issues. And the other issue which is pending is the renovation, there's a county culvert that's in the locks and that's leading to some flooding and water drainage issues.
And those are pending where?
In Erie County Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that pretty much covers number two appeal. What about the first part, about the order dismissed because it was not timely filed?
Yes, sir. The, Mr. Baxter's decision was issued on May sixteen, twenty days from May sixteen through June fifth. So, the appeal had to be filed honor before June fifth, and it was not, it was filed on June sixth. And, you know, a day is a day. So, I mean, by file, by file something late with Court of Common Pleas or with the, the sixth district of the Ohio Supreme Court, that's considered jurisdictional. So, it's, once you miss that deadline, the deadline's gone.
And what happened?
The appeal's, the appeal's not timely filed.
In the court system, what happened?
The court would dismiss it. So, they would just, they would, they would not accept it. It's, it's what they call a jurisdictional deadline, meaning that you file it late and it's annulled. So.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to say football, Mr. Bennett responds?
I'd like to have.
Oh, thank you.
We can go back and forth. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you.
And once again, not local, we needed unsupervised officer of the court.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Do you have any rebuttal to this?
Well, first of all, we've got a four-page, single-spaced letter, which is essentially a motion to dismiss the appeal. My office would like fourteen days to respond to this. We received this yesterday about ten thirty in the morning. He's citing, I don't know, five or, four or five cases here. Perry Township Board of Trustees versus Franklin County, citing the Supreme Court case, Casper versus Corey. We are ready to discuss this tonight, but we would like time to respond in writing to this board, as he has given me a message to respond to with less than twenty-four hours to get through it, all right? With respect to the timing, okay? What he has quoted, and I'm on the top paragraph on page two of this letter. Appeals to the board may be taken by any person aggrieved or by any officer of the township affected by any decision of the administrative officer. The appeal shall be taken within twenty days after the decision by filing with the officer a notice of appeal specifying the grounds. Mr. Baxter did this event, suddenly he goes over to the Dunn's property. I believe that it is on May the sixteenth or something. We have a scheduled date of five sixteen, a completion date of five sixteen, we have an activity date, whatever that is, of five nineteen. And in fact, Mr. Baxter did not see fit to advise anyone of the Board of Trustees of Vermillion Township, his employer, that he was reversing Mr. Sexton's citation of well over a year earlier, April of twenty three, I'm sorry, April of twenty four. That citation found Mr. Dunn in violation of subordinances, some of the, some of the quotes. Essentially that he was plugging up a water course and flooding Cherry Road without any permission of the engineer. Another, another part of the citation said you are erecting barriers to that water course. Mr. Dunn's response was, as is his attorneys, you can't cite me for that, I'm agricultural. Well, Mr. Dunn himself did not take those arguments to this board of appeals. That's the place where he should have argued them way back over a year ago, fifteen months ago. And had he done that, this board would have listened to those arguments that if you are agricultural, then you cannot be cited by this board. The Supreme Court of Ohio has looked at this very issue. Case called Blueberry Hill. And the Supreme Court, and I explained this to Mr. Baxter in an email, which he paid no attention to, that any type of agricultural exception must be incident to agriculture itself. We've tried without success to get Mr. Dunn to respond to interrogatories, he finally is going to get them to me in the next two or three weeks. As to what agriculture are you engaged on at your home? He's got about eighty-seven acres, et cetera. What actually are you doing so that you can invoke this exception? That was our, that was our request to him months and months ago. But why we are here? With respect to the statute of limitations, Mr. Baxter, you need to let me know because your own code says, your own code says that any appeal, I have to put in that appeal what I am aggrieved by. I have to let this board know what of Mr. Baxter's activities has caused me, the filer, agreeance that I need a review from. And without this document, that he says, I went out to the Dunn's residence and I decided they're agricultural and they're okay. Without that document, document in my hand, I cannot appeal. He kept this from us until May twenty eighth. I finally said, Mr. Baxter, I'm hearing that you are overruling Mr. Sexton's citation. And his response in an email that I could not believe is, if you are asking me if I have issued a fake citation of completion to go with Mr. Sexton's fake citation of, of a problem, yes, I have done that. Twenty-four hours later, one day before we're supposed to go to court, Mr. Baxter finds it necessary to send me a copy of this document. Within twenty-four hours, we appealed on May thirtieth to Mr. Baxter and to the Board of Zoning Appeals, this board, through an email. A few days later, we get a question from Mr. Baxter saying, hey, if you're going to appeal, you need to fill out a special form for that. And he sent me this form on June third. And so, we waited a couple more days, and on June sixth, we sent that back to everyone filled out. We sent a copy to Miss Bailey, we sent a copy to Mr. Baxter, we at all times copied all of the Board of Trustees. So, if the zoning citation has an activity date of five nineteen, I got my appeal in within seventeen days of five nineteen. I did not get my appeal in within twenty days of five sixteen because the zoning official decided not to tell anybody about it, including his own board. Which I find rather shocking, and the idea that Mr. Dunn and his attorney would now come in and say, sorry, Mr. Bennett, yeah, they might have kept it from you, but you're in luck, you're gonna have your twenty days. That is not the way, my friend, that is not the way, my friend, we do business in this township. We're more professional than that. Now, let us get to the case law. The case law, he says, you don't have standing to appeal anything. First of all, the case law that the gentleman is citing has to do with. Let's look just at the Supreme Court case, Casper versus Thorin, where it said, the Board of Trustees of a township cannot appeal a decision of this board to the Board of Common Pleas, or I'm sorry, the Court of Common Pleas. That is absolutely true. If we lose here tonight, we are out of luck with respect to going to the Court of Common Pleas. Mr. Dunn has beaten us fair and square. But we wish to be treated fairly by this board. With respect to the allegations, that what he refers to, the looming question of whether the board had any knowledge of this, every email I sent to this board, with respect, you can look at them, includes Chairman Bogman, includes Don Rowe, includes Kurt Johnson. And as soon as Mr. Bogman told me, you probably need to get something to Lorraine Bailey, I said, okay. We got that to her immediately. And that was in her hands on the sixth, all right? So, the timing of our appeal is based on the fact that we hadn't had notice of it for fifteen days before we finally got it. And I have trustees in this room who will be happy to testify that, yes, they authorized me to file this and they authorized me to file this not to pit he Sexton against, against Mr. not to pit Keith Sexton against Mr. Baxter. The gentleman is correct when he says, I am not taking offense at Mr. Baxter's conclusion that because he is in an agricultural zone, he cannot be cited. I disagree with it. That's not what I'm appealing. What I'm appealing, the gentleman misspoke when he said the issue is in the Court of Common Pleas. And then actually, the issue was in the Court of Common Pleas in April of twenty-twenty-four, when we had a trial of the issue. And when we had a trial of the issue, we told the judge that Mr. Dunn had failed to appeal in a timely manner to this board. And his response was, yes, that is true. Because Mr. Dunn failed to respond to this board, he doesn't get to just go straight to the Court of Common Pleas. He appealed that decision of Judge Bennett. The District Court, I'm sorry, the District Court, Sixth District Court in Toledo of Appeals, agreed with Judge Roger Bennett and said, yes, Keith Sexton's citation is valid and enforceable. And he took that decision all the way up to the Supreme Court of Ohio. And the Supreme Court of Ohio looked at that and found two things. Number one, we have no reason to take this case to overrule the Sixth District, as in that is the law of this case. And number two, very importantly, you, Mr. Dunn, the stays are up on this, failing to clear out this water course. You need to start digging. To this day, Mr. Dunn disagrees with the Supreme Court of Ohio, the Sixth District Court of Appeals, and Judge Bennett. We're going to have another trial of this on the permitted injunction in November. The only reason I am here tonight, you are absolutely correct. So this is not whether Mr. Dunn is zoned agricultural and whether or not he needs to currently be engaged in agriculture, as the Supreme Court has opined in the Blueberry Hill case. I will brief this for you, just as my opponent has briefed it. I need fourteen days to do that. But we are here because the law has spoken. The zoning citation that was nullified by Joe Baxter has already been enforced by bodies above this body. That is the Court of Common Pleas, the Sixth District, and the Supreme Court of Ohio. Therefore, you, sir, have no jurisdiction to sit down. You have no jurisdiction to issue it. You can disagree with Keith Sexton. You can disagree with me. But you can't overrule the Supreme Court of Ohio. And when you did that, you aggrieved my trustees. You aggrieved Kenneth Bogman. You aggrieved me personally because I've been in litigation with Mr. Dunn for eighteen months. And as an aggrieved person, you better believe I filed my appeal on behalf of me because it affects my litigation. It affects my ability to protect Cherry Road from flooding. It affects the township trustee's ability to do that very thing that we have to do by statute. I will take questions at this time. I would like time to write to this board to let them know why I disagree with these bases, not because they're wrong, but because they have to do with appeals of this body. If you disagree with me, I'm unlucky. And I will not take that to the Court of Common Pleas. The zoning citation in the case against Robert Dunn is five percent of that case. It's a small part of it, but it matters to us, you bet it does. Because I believe what Keith Sexton did back in April the twenty-fourth was based on the fact that Robert Dunn was flooding Cherry Road. And whether or not he is in agriculture or not, he doesn't get to endanger the people in this room that traveled Cherry Road. And that's why we filed an injunction. That's why we were granted that injunction. And that's why two higher courts have upheld that injunction. Thank you.
Questions?
Well, I got some.
Order. This next trial that is coming up with a visiting judge, what is the purpose of that?
That's a good question. We want a preliminary injunction against Robert Dunn.
Don't you already have that?
We have that. But in order to make that enforceable in the future, I need a permanent injunction.
So this next litigation is just to get a permanent injunction?
It is true.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Trustees? Does any of these trustees?
I should speak up here?
I'll go first, sir. I'll let Don go first.
Want a chair? You raise your right hand. You swear, tell the truth, hold true to nothing but the truth, so help the God?
I do, sir.
Could you give your name and address, please?
My name is Don Rowe. I live at one-four, seven-one-four, Niesel Road. I'm a Vermillion Township trustee.
Thank you. We have to do that for the record. We ask who you are.
I don't know what amount of time I'm limited to, so I'm gonna just speak. And then, Mr. Chairman, you direct that.
Okay, and speak of fact only, and topic that happens.
Topic that happens, exactly. There was a violation, and this case has been going on for some time. There was a violation issued by our former zoning administrator to the Dunn property. And let me back up and say that it was responsibility of the Vermillion Township trustees of roads, bridges, ditches, and to ensure their safety and all that is encompassed. And so I want to make that perfectly clear. So there was a violation issued to Mr. Dunn. Now, this is a violation. It is not the appeal, but it is important to understand. When the violation was issued by Mr. Sexton on the Dunn property, the county got involved. Anyone can speak on that that was involved. The violation was issued. And the purpose of a violation is to bring a remedy to the violation. And so a violation was issued. I have examined the violation extensively. And there's issues with that violation. And then the issue was corrected by Erie County Commissioners. They came out, cleared the culvert, robed it up. So when the violation was issued, and there was talk of coming to the trustee board during the trustee meeting for information, Mr. Dunn comes to the township trustee meeting. And actually, it shows this violation letter was issued to him by a zoning administrator, Keith Sexton. And he asked, and I can understand why he asked. He asked, who issued this letter of violation? So the letter being issued, the three trustees at the time were totally silent from his question of who issued that, including the zoning administrator, Keith Sexton, who issued the violation. Nothing, not a word. So Mr. Dunn, and I realize I'm speaking on Mr. Dunn's behalf. He can speak if he wishes, but the meetings recorded and minutes according, basically asked if this was fake because it was unsigned. So that is where some of the fake discussion comes from. No one would answer who sent this letter. And the letter of violation seems like it comes from the Vermillion Township Board of Trustees.
Let me get this tape.
What letter is this known as? Is the violation letter issued by Keith Sexton in twenty-twenty-four? February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Exhibit A three.
And you're saying it was unsigned? It disappeared, right? Signed by the Erie County Board of Trustees.
It is not signed. So when Mr. Dunn comes to the meeting, to the trustee meeting, and asks who sent this letter, not a word, silence from the Board of Trustees, including the zoning inspector that issued the violation. But it appears that the violation was issued by the Board of Trustees, as you'll see on the bottom.
And the Board of Trustees are not the enforcers of the resolution.
Correct.
You're legislative.
Correct. So there's problems with violations, aren't there? So there was a change in the position. Keith Sexton resigning. We're fast forwarding to twenty-twenty-five. Joe Baxter was hired as the new township zoning inspector slash administrator. So there are several cases that the township was dealing with. Joe goes out to use the property, issues a compliance letter. So there was a closed-door session, if you will, in Erie County where the Assistant Erie County Prosecutor, the Duns, were in a closed-door session meeting. And it was the day before, I think, a few days before, when the Assistant Prosecutor, Mr. Bennett, got the letter of compliance. So after that closed-door session, which was extended until sometime in August, Mr. Bennett filed an appeal. And he filed the appeal to the BZA Board for himself, the Vermillion Township trustee, and the Erie County Commissioner. I can only speak for myself. I would ask the chair, that he would ask the other three trustees that make up the trustee board. Permission was never given, Mr. Bennett, from the Board of Trustees, to file the appeal to the BZA Board. So a lot more to be said about that. But the compliance letter that Joe wrote is appeared from the talk between both attorneys that 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 the administrator did not, you know, have our permission or whatever, anything like that. But when we're speaking on topic only, to the BZA appeal, the majority of, and maybe unanimous, Board of Vermillion Trustees did not give the permission to file the appeal to the BZA Board. Any questions?
Any questions, guys?
So let me say this, please. To finish on my statement, I'm gonna go back a little bit. The Vermillion Township trustees' position is to protect all roads, ditches, bridges. We will uphold all Ohio revised codes. So when when it comes to the Dunn property, which is agricultural, and some will want to try to argue agricultural, whatever. Some ordinances are different to agricultural property. The issue is, is Mr. Dunn in a violation to the township? The answer is no. So the if there is a violation on the Dunn property, I want to make this perfectly clear, that is applicable to the county commissioners. That is an issue with them. And they can take that issue up. If there is an issue of abiding property owners, that is a civil issue. They can take that up as well. So as long, our position is that a road doesn't flood, and it hasn't, we've had pretty heavy rain. The road is not flooded. I've taken pictures myself, been there every time we've had substantial rain. So that's our position. If the road doesn't flood, and there's no Ohio revised codes violations, that's where we're at. We will certainly, Vermillion Township trustees, uphold all Ohio revised codes. Any questions?
Larry, do you have a question?
I do. Living on Cherry Road, I'm intimately familiar with the high-water quality of Cherry Road. And remember very specifically the road being closed on more than one occasion at Darrell going north. So are you telling me now that this is a moot point? That that's not going to flood anymore?
Here, are you finished?
I am.
Here's what our position is as trustees to Mr. Dunn and his property accordingly. We cannot, as Vermillion Township trustees, make anyone guarantee that a road will not flood. That is up to the Good Lord Almighty. Because, as you know, for forty days, he made it rain, the entire earth flooded. So the issue is, is we have had substantial rain. And I have been there. And the road has not flooded. Has it flooded in the past? Yes. That was taken care of. It has not flooded since. So our issue is, don't flood the road. And as long as Mr., I don't think anybody can say or sign a statement that I will guarantee the road won't flood. You cannot do that. Look what's going on in Texas or New Mexico. You cannot guarantee that a road won't flood. But if Mr. Dunn can do everything in his power to ensure that the road doesn't flood, then that's what we want. If the road does flood, and we may just perfectly clear, if the road does flood, we will uphold every Ohio revised code, and Mr. Dunn will be held accountable to every other resident.
If the road floods, but not due to the culvert? You can't hold him responsible for that, can you?
No.
So you're talking about if the road floods due to any activity on his part?
It is not.
Okay.
Questions?
So if the creek don't rise, right?
And so far, we have had no, you say you live on, you live on Cherry Road? Have you seen any flooding this spring, this summer?
No, but let me ask you this. Let me rephrase that question. What has changed from the time that the road was flooding on more than one occasion, and now? What has changed?
The county came out, cleared out the culvert, and some of the dirt where the culvert was flooded. And I think you can ask anybody involved in that, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they're still flooding out of South Side. The guys down there on the left are all flooding all the way.
But we're talking about the North Side.
Yeah, I know where we are. I know exactly where we are.
And Mr. Bennett?
And all those streams run right in there.
And Mr. Dunn has actually made a waterway there to ensure that the road. Anybody's welcome to come out and see it. I took pictures of the way the road doesn't flood. Questions?
So you, as a trustee, are satisfied with the progress made on Cherry Road?
I am.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you interview the other two trustees as well.
It's in my plan of attack here.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. I apologize because I'm laughing. I slipped him down.
When I'm done, I'll take up the picture that I have. The Board of Trustees have reintroduced the motion to be a party of interest because of the roads, just the roads. We felt that Mr. Baxter's blanket certificate of compliance was overreaching. There is only one body that has authority over the maintenance and the safety of the roads, and that's the township trustees. The administrator can't do it. The county can't do it. We do. We decide whether the roads are safe and clear. And there are statutes upon statutes from fifty-five eighty-nine and six to fifty-five seventy-one with a couple of them that says it's our job. We're actually getting in trouble if we don't keep the roads safe and clear. It's our job as trustees to keep the roads safe and clear. At some point in time, culvert B-two-twelve, which has been there since at least nineteen oh-seven, that'll wait, Smith, that I've seen, has taken water from the south to the north from a higher elevation now to a lower elevation. At some point in time, for reasons I won't At some point in time, for reasons I won't discuss here, the water stopped flowing north through that culvert and through Mr. Dunn's property down Thompson Road. Well, investigation reveals that there's some sort of waterway there. Now, there's a disagreement about whether it's memorial or intermittent, but there's a stream. And the reason I say there's a stream there is from more than a hundred years ago. They put a culvert through Cherry Road. They don't just put culverts through roads for no reason. The culvert's there to transfer water from one side of the road to the other side. Now, if a property owner, regardless of his zoning, creates a burning dirt higher than the culvert, and that floods the road, we as the trustees, who are the property owners for the township, have an interest. We have, we are allowed to say that, we would like to appeal that decision. Because we, as the trustees of the property owners of the township, and it's a township road. So if the road gets flooded, we have concerns. Has that waterway been completely cleared? Not to the point where it was. But as Mr. Dunn saw, or Mr. Rowe saw, it was cut out. If the road doesn't flood, if water doesn't stand in the ditches, if water doesn't weaken the south and north sides of that culvert, we're fine. All we care about, we do care about the property owner, let me be clear, we do care about the property owner. But our first responsibility is to care about the safety and maintenance of the roads. That's why we, in a motion on June fourth, said we're an interested party. Mr. Bennett is an administrative agent of the township, he's our legal representative, so he works for the township. Now, granted, he works for the prosecutor's office, but he provides that service from the prosecutor's office to us as an employee. So if he's got an issue, I fully support what he wants to argue. I don't understand what we're arguing sometimes, because all we care about is making sure the roads aren't flooded. What Mr. Dunn does on his property, you know, let's say this out loud for the record. As an agricultural entity of eighty-seven acres, it's his business. Bible nineteen is correct, his lawyer said, Bible nineteen is correct, he's right. But to say that Mr. Baxter doesn't answer to us when it comes to roads is incorrect. Because Bible five oh three one and Bible five oh three two say that we appoint him, we direct him. And since we are all creatures of statute, we can only do what the statute says. And also applies to Mr. Baxter. We can only do what the trustee directed him to do. So with that, I give you this information for you to consider what his letter or his certificate means. But in that inspection from the I-Work system, it doesn't say certificate of compliance. It doesn't say that Mr. Dunn has a blanket ability to do whatever he wants on his property because it's agriculture. And that's very dangerous for this board to say that they agree with Mr. Baxter. Because that means anybody with five more acres to build a pole barn and put off their property line. And say, I've got six acres and I am a hundred percent exempt from our own. That is not the case. You're exempt from zoning in agricultural issues as it relates to agriculture, but not in buildings, not in residential uses. And I think we need to clarify that. And Mr. Baxter is very good at his job, but I think we need to clear that up, and that's why we're bringing to you the board. It's not us making the decision, it's not him making the decision, it's you providing the clarification. And I'm open to any questions as well.
I am.
Sure. Will that waterway be turned down to its natural state?
You're asking me to guess, I'm no engineer.
Yeah, I know.
But I think that if you never put dirt there, there's water, the road's dirt.
The existing dirt that was put in there has been dug back out.
There is a small trench that's been dug everywhere.
Water. But that existing dirt was being pulled back out.
I don't know who, where, or when, maybe somebody in the audience can answer. Flared a small path for water to flow at a restricted rate.
It's all the path.
Yeah, but when it, but it got very close on April of this year to flooding the road. Get the white line that that's at.
And down the road, being that we have a culvert underneath that road, a pipearm beneath that road, um, who's gonna be responsible if that pipe collapses? The engineers, obviously, right?
The engineers, yeah.
Okay. So if we back it, if we back it up and there's water sitting there all the time, and the likelihood of that happening is pretty good.
A school bus, a cement truck, a loading truck can, you know how water works hydrologically in soil? It loosens it every time something goes over there. And that's why trains don't run in flooded river.
So that's all in there. They put in the category? So the county, is the county's responsibility to maintain a culvert?
Yes.
And they, they can't really call it a culvert anymore, because if it's built a hundred years ago, I'm sure the topography has changed on his property.
The culvert's still there and they still maintain it.
The culvert is going under the road.
Yes.
But once it gets onto his property.
The water path?
Yeah, the water path, uh, has got to change over a hundred years.
I'm sure it has.
It has.
Erosion changes.
Exactly.
But.
So the problem, so the problem that I see, that you're telling us, is that, is that the county is responsible for the, the maintenance of this culvert. And if the culvert does get blocked up, the township suffers an injury. Okay, which gives them standing in any court cases.
Correct.
Is that, that's what you're telling us?
Yes. As far as, is the road right away in the road, we have an interest, yes.
Okay. Now, going back to the part of, of, yes, you are, are responsible for directing, and I'll assert that you appoint. Okay? But you not, are not responsible for any enforcement of any of the resolutions.
Nor have I ever questioned.
You appointed him to, to.
Enforce the zoning.
Enforce the zoning, exactly. So, so he is within his right.
When it applies to zoning, yes, sir, you are correct.
So a letter of compliance was, was within his right. Now. Originally, there was a violation, okay? Then they plugged the, plugged the creek in, okay? And the idea of a violation is to let the person know that they are in error, and they need to rectify the situation. Correct?
Correct.
It is not punitive.
Correct.
Okay? So it not being punitive, and once the, once the, once the, once the violation is corrected, are they not in compliance?
Is the violation corrected? That would be a question for the engineering.
Exactly, so it has nothing to do with Vermillion Township.
Nothing at all.
So I'd question, why are we even here?
I asked the very same question, sir. I only appear, and my fellow board members only appear, to protect the interests of Cherry Road.
Okay, now, were you, were you, I don't know if I should ask you this or not.
The truth is always easy.
Were you, were you one of the trustees that authorized this appeal?
That authorized this appeal? Uh, when it was brought to my attention, we, the trustees, made a motion to join the appeal. So when was that? On our June fourth meeting, I believe, if you remember. I believe it was our June fourth meeting.
Yeah, that's not what I heard from the last trustee.
I can't speak for the last trustee.
That's not what I heard. Okay, uh, anything else, any other questions, Ken?
Ken, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Kurt?
Yes.
You're turning a barrel, come on.
Chris Johnson, one zero five one zero, Ashmont Road. They left me really not much to say. Truthfully, though, words that I need to say is, we are there for the roads, bridges and the ditches. Mr. Dunn, at present, has been cleared, current ditch is being out, the water is flowing. Is it flowing the way that it used to? I can't state that for, I'm still just.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
They need to be sworn in.
Oh, and I'm very sorry, I'm getting carried away.
Ken, so another one I missed.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, but the truth is what we got? State your name and address, please.
Uh, Chris Johnson, one zero five one zero, Ashmont Road. As I was saying, it is cleared, uh, it is flowing, uh, we have not seen the road flooding. Don't, we can't state that it will never flood. Uh, Mother Nature determines the whole like a lot. I would say if Mr. Dunn continues to make sure that that roadway is clearing and that there's water flowing, I don't see an issue with him being out of compliance, uh, with the ORC regulations. Uh, if the culvert gets covered, again, as my other trustees were stating, any ORC regulations would be enforced, so that it's always extensive. Uh, in regards to anything past that, that's what we're here for, that's what we're here for, to maintain, for the township residents. And they've pretty much taken all my thunder, and I don't have a lot to say past that, I could iterate, but I think it's.
Any questions?
I got one.
Sure. Um, is there any spoils in that right-of-way? Sure.
Right, uh, to my knowledge, I don't see anything in there that is affecting the culvert or the drainage. I will say that I have contacted the county, and I've had, I have asked myself, I said, as this proceeds, I would like to have that culvert inspected. I stated it to any bodies that need to be known, that I would like to say, because of the water that was sustained that was in there, I'd like to make sure that it is a safe road for our township residents to travel on. And I will still be pursuing that, obviously, with everything that's going on, I'm not quite sure on the timetable.
Yes, sir.
So this hundred-year-old culvert?
Yes, sir.
What, is that what, thirty-inch culvert or something?
I believe it's around thirty.
It's a lot, that's a really big culvert.
It is a large-sized culvert for that side, for that road.
On an average day, uh, how much water would be in that hole?
I would not be able to tell you that a wholeheartedly. I would say during dry season, very little. I would say in rainy season, it's probably pumping pretty good. Uh, for the flow that gets into there, I would not be able to give you the, uh, quote for when on that.
There's a lot of water that comes through there.
Yes, sir.
When you look.
They can get pretty aggressive.
Yeah.
Does the, uh, does the, uh, the county maintain that well enough? Your, uh, your standard?
I would not be sure about that. Uh, I would say probably everyone, every culvert could be looked at a lot stronger than what it is right now, every, on every road. Uh, would I say that I know their maintenance schedule? I do not, so I apologize for that. Uh, that's a hard one to get down, I know that they try and make it within every few years to search culverts, but I am aware that are certain culverts and drains that haven't been touched for, and they will put in.
Yeah. So the road hasn't flooded, has it?
It has been.
About a year?
April first.
Yeah.
You know, this year?
April first of this year, it flooded all the way to the mid-block.
Okay, now, was that due to any problem on the Dunn property?
Yes, it was.
Yep.
At least, sir, that is what our witnesses will testify to, I am not an engineer myself. But I believe, I believe that it was, yes.
I have one other question.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, the, the county takes care of the culvert?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, and what's the road, uh, easement is what, ten foot from the edge of the road?
I believe it is ten foot.
Okay, so does the county then, uh, dig down to the bottom of the culvert?
For the inspection of it?
Yeah. Into the, toward the Dunn's property.
I would assume that they would go to where the culvert is at, or be able to have a safe interaction with, uh, examining the culvert itself. I would assume they'll go up, as far as they need to put block to determine it.
Yeah.
I would hope that you would just scope it to start with to find out how it's flowing, what's in it.
Well, that's, that, I guess I didn't phrase that very well. What I'm saying is, you, uh, dig down to the bottom of the culvert. And then Mr. Dunn's property is here, and he's got a wall like this. Uh, and so you've got a bunch of water standing, this is never gonna work. Uh, really, that ditch through Mr. Dunn's has to be at the bottom of the culvert. That you've grasped up, issue?
We have had that conversation, just, uh, making sure that, I've stated along with the township trustees have stated, it's important that it's not, dirt doesn't have to be, doesn't need to be up on top, it needs to be below that culvert, so it can't flow away and out away from the roadway.
Is that happening?
That is what the court ordered, sir. Uh, Mr. Dean, um, and not to interrupt you, sir.
No, you're fine.
The court ordered on April eighteenth of twenty-four, for Mr. Dunn to clear out all the aspects of the waterway, so that we wouldn't have this issue when he walked in. Mr. Dunn appealed the issue, he appealed it again, we are back and we're about to argue the permanent injunction. But the answer is, in the morning, at eight AM, myself, four engineers, and two sheriff's deputies are going to be searching the entire property to look at the current status of, of what the situation is on the land.
By the entire property? You know, wherever the ditch is at? You need to hold the whole ninety-eight.
No, I'm not actually.
I was just asking a question. You're coming through the sheriff, I'm sorry. You didn't even get a word.
We're searching the entire property, sir, because we have records, as recently as two thousand fourteen, that shows that there was a water course running through the entire property, going up to Darby Creek, as it has for hundreds of years, taking that water to Lake Erie. That's why we're searching it, because Mr. Dunn has brought in approximately a hundred truckloads of dirt to fill in the culvert. We need to see what he has filled in. He's always told me that there is no water course on my land. We have maps showing a water course, and so what we're gonna do tomorrow is find out how much evidence of the water course has been destroyed? How much of the water course has been filled in? The judge in April of twenty twenty-four said, you need to unblock this. Why? Because you're endangering Cherry Road. It's the only issue. Let me interrupt you here, now, that's between the county. Right?
That is between?
That is the county, because there's no injury provided to the township unless the road is blocked, unless the culvert is blocked. If the culvert is blocked, the road will flood. Therefore, the township and the county both have an injury if the culvert is blocked, if the water course is blocked. That's why both of them are in this case. Your question was the same question raised by Judge McMonigal, who comes in from Cleveland. Judge Bennett never raised the question why both entities were in the lawsuit. Judge McMonigal asked your very question.
Smart guy.
Yeah. He's a very well-respected judge, he said, Mr. Bennett, or he may have been referring to Mr. Dunn, why do we have both parties here? Why isn't it just the county? The reason we have both county, or both parties here is because the county is required to keep the culvert clear, so that the water flows. And if it doesn't flow, then the township has a problem, because it, um, it floods the road and then people get hurt. That's why both are in here.
I don't see how you can adjudicate it, Jeff.
Well, I have three examples of it flooding in the last eighteen months, so we're not talking with respect, sir, about it yet. We're talking about evidence.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Baum, you had something else to say, please?
Let me, let me, that's where you end, because I'm.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, you have to look the truth?
I do, I have, I have everything I've already previously testified to, it wasn't true. Okay. We sat right there in front of them. And I am thirteen oh seven state anchor residence, eighteen oh seven, like the trustees. To Mr. Dean, hit me with a nail on the head. The elevation of the bottom of the culvert is six hundred and ninety-six feet. Get a little homework here. Now, the question is, is, is the ditch beyond the right-of-way at six ninety-six or lower? I don't know, because I have that on the property. As long as it's below six ninety-six, we're good, because the road won't flood, the culvert won't flood. If it's anything higher than six ninety-six anywhere on Mr. Dunn's property, it prevents, prevents the water from flowing naturally from the culvert to the lower elevation, that's where we have an issue. So you, you beat everybody else to the punch and said, is it this low? That's what it needs to be. And as to the culvert, it is a thirty-inch concrete culvert, it's on a county map from nineteen seventy-four and a map in nineteen oh seven, which we just have in our offices, so if you wanna peruse those, that's all the issue.
I read somewhere there's an eighty-nine-foot drop from Cherry Road to the backside, about the, over the north end. I can't verify that number. Is that, is that from Cherry Road?
Yeah.
Or is that, uh, your, your property?
It's not true, that's false.
Well, we will be taking measurements tomorrow.
Okay.
Any answers, you have to answer that question.
Yeah, okay.
I thought I read something.
Is there a drop?
Yes, something about the engineer said that there is, and I, I didn't know exactly.
I can say with certainty that the culvert on Thompson Road is lower than the culvert on Cherry Road. And the path appears to go from that culvert on Cherry to the culvert on Thompson, which is at a lower elevation. What I can't say is how low.
Okay.
And that's, I'm on, okay? Oh, I would like to add, I'm thinking, Mr. Dunn's events, actually. Um, he did text me, and we have the text records, he has copies, I have copies, on the original citation. And it did not look familiar to me. The original citation of Mr. Sexton did say it, the Board of Trustees, but it was not signed. And as Mr. Dunn could probably testify, in my response text, I said, I cannot say that this is real, or if this is fake. The question is, who signed it, if anybody? If not, was it sent certified? If it was sent certified, who received it? Because like him, I had suspicions that it might not be real, because there has been some tampering in this case that concerns me. Because like him, I had suspicions that it might not be real, because there has been some tampering in this case that concerns me.
It was real, I know what it nailed.
Okay, so Lorraine can testify that she sent it certified mail.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay, uh. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
No, uh, not very good that ones. Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the board. In our executive session, um, with county engineer, Mr. Bennett, county trustee, uh, and myself. One of the questions was, and it's a great question, the culvert is a hundred years old and we questioned, can anyone produce any maintenance records on the culvert? And Mr. Bennett, you have to clarify with that. I don't think that there was, no one can find any maintenance records of the culvert being serviced, so.
What I can say about that, sir, is they don't keep the best records in the world when they clear out a culvert either, either in Vermillion, anywhere in the county. A lot of times that is, they get an email, I need you to clear out all the culverts this month and they go and clear them and they might send an email, we got them all cleared. I don't believe I have records on V two twelve clearance and believe we have, we have looked.
Yeah, we, and, and there he is, we asked, what's the maintenance record?
Yeah.
Right. And then a statement made, um, that there was a hundred truckloads of dirt just a few minutes ago, deposited in the culvert. That's not an accurate statement. I don't think Mr. Bennett meant to say that because you can't put a hundred truckloads of dirt in a culvert.
Yes, sir, we have, we have.
You said on the property.
Yeah, we have witnesses of, of a hundred, a hundred plus truckloads of dirt on the property.
He did not say property.
Yeah, he did.
The recording.
He said, put a hundred truckloads in a property.
There weren't, there was discussion of a hundred property, but it was the culvert.
It's got nothing to do with this.
Uh, this is back here, we'd like to, uh, take the photo. Raise your hand. You swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I did. Go by extra sixty-four fifteen, call the road, Vermillion Township Administrator, zoning inspector. On five sixteen, twenty twenty-five, I went up to Mr. Dunn's property because I had been questioned about, uh, violations, permits, things that were in the I work system that were left open, unchecked, not closed, not really understanding. So as I went through these, uh, and started checking.
Can you, can you define the I work?
The I work system is the system that we do our permitting and our violations and through the township and the city. So as I was going through the system, uh, cleaning up stuff, Mr. Dunn's property was an issue. So, uh, I had been involved in it multiple times, went out there, look, there's no mounds of dirt anywhere to be seen. So the letter of compliance came because the violation was correct. Mounds of dirt without a site plan for stormwater. Now, if you look up agricultural, Mr. Dunn has eighty-nine acres. He can manage his own stormwater. He's not required to have a storm permit, therefore, that's not needed. And as far as mounting dirt on his property, he's agricultural. He doesn't need a permit to mount dirt on his property or move dirt on his property, because as a farmer, as I fill a field, I constantly move dirt. I don't get permits to move my dirt. He doesn't need one, which is why the letter of compliance came into play. If you have a violation, if you have a high grass violation and I give you a violation and you call me and say my grass is mowed and I go out, what am I supposed to do? I will give you a letter of compliance. You fixed the violation that I cited you for. Mr. Dunn's property was fixed. We talk about a waterway, a ditch, navigable waters of the United States, that is for the Army Corps of Engineers, for the Ohio EPA, all of which are not here. Uh, neither is the county. I don't see the county in this matter. They actually have money invested in time in coming out and clearing out the culvert. Where's the violation from the county?
Uh, that's, that, that is, that is, that is a moot point because it has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
You're right, it does, because the mound, the dirt, the county came out and removed all that dirt out of the culvert. So there's your mounting.
But we're talking about the violation, okay?
Right.
They removed the dirt, the county caused the mound, the mounting, is what you're saying?
The county, the county came out and removed the dirt out of the culvert.
Right.
What he was cited for.
Right.
The county came out and hauled it all away. So they technically fixed the violation themselves when they came out and removed all the dirt. I, I don't know where there's confusion in how it's not taken care of. I went out there with pictures. Mounting dirt without a permit and not having a stormwater plan. He's not required. None of those are required. Now, the reason that we're here today, I can't answer that one either because at twenty days, it says in our resolution book, I am tasked with upholding these rules. I denied Mr. Bennett his application to an appeal for this meeting because of the fact that he was twenty-one days out. We can have conversation, the trustees knew, a week before Mr. Bennett knew that Mr. Dunn was getting a letter of compliance, had conversation with all three of them, letting them know where my scanning was and what I had found. That was it. So for him to say that the trustees were not informed, that is not true. They were informed.
You, you served, uh, the letter, the certificate of compliance on the sixteenth of May?
Yes, yes.
And when were the trustees informed?
So I had talked to them, uh, actually before that about giving a letter of compliance. I was waiting on a few things, doing my due diligence, just to make sure that all bases were covered before I did. But that was my intent, because everything that I had seen, there was no mounds of dirt there. He's agricultural. The reason that the township was there is because of the previous zoning inspector did not understand Mr. Dunn's agricultural and that the rules didn't apply to him. So what he cited him for, he technically could not get. I don't know why the county didn't write a violation, why the Ohio EPA hasn't followed up, or the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, this is such a hot topic, but as far as the township is concerned, we issued a violation. The violation was fixed. I gave a letter of compliance and the story.
Were you, uh, were you aware that this is all under litigation at the time that you gave the certificate of compliance?
Uh, I knew, I did.
And how it would affect?
No, 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 because quite honestly, I didn't even know that, I personally thought that Mr. Dunn was suing the township. I didn't find out until about the tenth of May that it was actually the township suing him. I had no idea. I honestly thought that it was the other way around and it wasn't. So that's when I started looking because I was like, wait a minute, why are we suing you? What has happened?
But you're, you are aware that there's litigation against Mr. Dunn when you gave him the certificate of compliance?
Correct, correct.
And did you know how that would affect the litigation?
I did not, I did not. I know that, that the, the violation was null and void because it was no longer there and as far as the litigation goes, uh, I tried talking to Mr. Bennett several times about it and it just got to the point where he, uh, stopped communicating with me altogether. And you can check in chains of emails with trustees that he discounted me over a month and a half ago, so.
So basically, what I'm hearing from you is that there was a violation, violation was corrective. And the idea of having issuing a violation is so that you can have a corrective, corrective action.
Correct.
And once that corrective action is completed, you're complaining.
Right, right. There has to be an end. I mean, we can't issue violations without fix or remedy there.
Any questions?
Yes, uh, I'm confused on this point. I know that one time when I go up, there were mounds of dirt. Maybe they've gone, this was a while back, but, uh, a mound, what we're talking about is a ditch, not a mound. And if you just have leveled ground, that isn't gonna solve this problem at all.
But Mr. Dean, the violation is for mounting dirt, sir.
Well, the mound, I think the mound was to create a barrier.
Mm-hmm.
To direct the water flow.
Uh, but my point is, uh, that, uh, mound, no, that, that you compete with ditch. Whether, that's the problem, isn't it? The core of this whole issue.
It, it, but it's the Ohio EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers. See, we don't have a violation for blocking a waterway. That's the Army Corps of Engineers or the Ohio EPA. And what we violated, gave them a violation for was mounting dirt. It doesn't say anything on there about blocking the course of a waterway, blocking flooding out a roadway. It is merely for mounting dirt on your property and not having a stormwater plant. You've got ninety acres? You don't need a stormwater plant. It says so right on the actual permit where the application for your county stormwater management. If you have over ten acres, you're not required for a permit.
Well, I think the EPA is a regulatory body for agricultural water.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken.
And I've done my homework. I've called the Army Corps of Engineers. No one can give a jurisdictional determination on whether or not there's a waterway. I listened to the guy for an hour explaining to me how they come to the, that determination and then when I asked for the information, it's never been done. So I don't know how you make jurisdictional determination without actually doing all of the due diligence. Um, you know, again, I, I see that there's no violation anymore and to avoid, uh, you know, lawsuit on the township we have. This is where we're at. I deny Mr. Bennett the appeal because he was twenty-one days. We shouldn't be here merely because of that. And I also know that on the application that he lied because of the fact that he did not have the full support of the board of trustees, like you said.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Baumann and he gave me that permission to go forward. He is the chair, my friend.
Okay, so with respect to.
You cannot unilaterally do anything as a trustee.
No, but he told me, as he just testified, that the board decided to join. The board decided to join this appeal because they were concerned about their road. It's exactly what I've been told.
That's on June fourth, right?
I don't know the date of it.
Yeah.
I just know that, I just. Yeah, I believe it was on June fourth or, or.
Yeah.
And I can only tell you this. If Mr. Dunn is in compliance, is he in compliance with the court's injunction as well, sir?
I don't know that. I know that he's complying with the township of Vermillion.
Okay.
That's what I do know.
So let us say that, let us say that the injunction is somewhat broader than the zoning citation. Will you at least agree with that?
Are they blocking?
You and I have discussed.
I mean, so here's my problem, Mr. Bennett.
You and I have discussed the injunction.
And you have not provided the correct information.
Let's, let's, we're not arguing.
I'm not gonna talk.
We're not arguing.
Let's take this temper down, both of you guys, okay?
Yes, sir.
We don't get this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Scott, did you have a, a point?
I, I do, and this goes back to our correspondence, which is thi- this is very out of order that the township trustees attorney is attacking the township trustees zoning inspector. I mean, this, that's.
Well, when you're called a liar, you get.
Well, this is, this is why, this is why I like this temperature that just kind of like blew off.
It's, it's very, it's very irregular, I mean.
It is.
And, 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 Mr. Chairman.
I hope so. It's more work. Is that correct?
You guys wanna keep it up, you're both gonna be out of here.
Mr. Chairman, you, you hit the nail on the head. This is, this is a county issue. This, this is not an issue that belongs in front of the court of zoning appeals with the township. So, I mean, this, this is why we requested this appeal to be dismissed. Let's go get it on in the county in front of Judge McMonigal. Uh, and I did want to point out, just, Mr. Bennett had said the Ohio Supreme Court made a ruling in this case. The Ohio Supreme Court made a major ruling in this case. The Ohio Supreme Court denied jurisdiction over these issues. But the issue that's pending in the trial court right now is what they call a preliminary injunction. A preliminary injunction is not a final order. Judge McMonigal, at any point in time, can lift that preliminary injunction, can deny a permanent injunction, can deny that there was a zoning violation, can deny that there's a revised code violation for disrupting the culvert in the absence of cam. So, um, th- these are not final orders and that, that case never should have been in front of the court of appeals in the first instance. My, my firm, actually, the Blueberry Hill case that, um, that Mr. Bennett cites, that, that's my firm's case. As well as, we just argued very successfully against the, against the Ohio Department of Transportation, preliminary and permanent injunctions over the lanes of State Route two. And, I mean, these are all preliminary orders that court can just change at any point in time. So I, I would agree one hundred percent with your assessment that this is not a matter that belongs here. This is a matter that needs to be put on judgment multiple steps and let him make some decisions.
Any other questions? Anything else, Joe? Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
Yeah. I'm sure.
It's not really irrelevant, but, uh, on the property, when was he given the exemption for agricultural?
He actually signed a contract with Mrs. Price when they purchased the, the property, uh, back in twenty twenty, I believe, because it was CAUV, uh, prior to that. And in order for that enforcement to stay, you have to maintain the course of that farming for a continuous three years. Otherwise, they come back and make you pay the taxes.
Correct, so you, for commercial or recreational purposes, all paperwork's done and all that?
Yes, yeah, he has a farm number, he's part of the farm here, the whole nine yards, yes. COU, CAUV number.
So he's, he's obviously going to talk to him over ten acres?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else?
Lorraine, uh, the letter, uh, we got from, uh, yeah, Bella McLaughlin reported, could you enter that as Exhibit D?
Uh, this.
No, I'm sorry, sorry.
Exhibit one.
Exhibit F.
F.
E was the last one, right?
E was the last.
E was the last. Gentlemen, should we go on deliberation? Can we pause this meeting, uh, going to deliberation?
If you're sick, sir. Do we get, do I get time to respond to these written questions?
You know, we will, we will answer that question after we come back.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Yes.
I requested, uh, uh, from the podium, that you ask each township trustee if they gave permission to our prosecuting attorney to file the appeal to the BGA board. I believe that was answered, that you all.
It was not.
You all agreed on June the fourth, that is not accurate.
That is not accurate, sir.
You've all been copying down every email that showed the appeal. Wait, correct? And I had direction from the board to do it.
No direction.
Well, sir, I had, with respect, sir, I had direction. Thank you.
A majority never gave you direction, so, Mr. Chairman, ask the Vermillion trustees. Mr. Baumann, did you authorize?
We passed a motion to join the appeal. We voted on that motion.
Is it in the minutes?
I believe so.
Sir, what, did you, did you?
I don't, I did not, I did not recall it being in the minutes.
Okay, so that's pull the minutes.
I would, you will have to pull the minutes.
Okay. Can you pull, pull the minutes?
I can.
Not now, but.
Yeah, I, I can get.
Okay, all right. Let's go to deliberation, we'll be back. It's an active and interesting party and they're pending, uh, Vermillion Township Board of zoning appeals, appearing, uh, on a legal matter involving Erie County Commissioners, Vermillion Township Board of Trustees and parcel number twelve something or other, commonly known as twelve oh twelve, eight oh nine Cherry Road, uh, Erie County Assistant Prosecutor Charles Bennett has submitted an appeal to his zoning decision, which, yes. The trustees will be available to answer any questions the BGA members have on this matter. Ro seconded the motion. Baumann, Johnson and Ro voted to approve the motion. So there was, it was a unanimous decision to, uh, to join as an active and interesting party in this appeal. So. Can we hear a motion to, uh, whatever you want to do?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table this till the August fifth. That'll give Mr. Bennett time to get his information together that he needs. And also before that time, we'd also like pictures of that culvert and ditch to see if it's been restored to its previous status. Um, if somebody can send us a report also, uh, like a week before, that would be great.
What, August fifth, did you get this?
August fifth, that's three weeks from today.
Thank you.
That's when you want to have another meeting.
Yeah, yes.
I don't, I want to amend that, you know, not, we want not only pictures, we want dimensions.
There you go.
Forgive me, dimensions of exactly what?
Uh, well, in. Uh, well, in relation to above sea level.
Oh, the, the engineer is going to be taking
Yeah.
many, many shots tomorrow so that we can, we can supply.
That's what I always wanted to know.
Okay, under, under discussion here, um, will there be a report filed on this? We will, can we have copy, I, not, can we have, we want a copy of that prior to the next, uh?
No, sir, my, my report dates are due on August fifteenth.
Your report dates.
My report dates to the court and to the Dunn's and to the Dunn's attorney.
We want a copy of the engineer's report.
And you are entitled to a copy. I just don't know that I can represent that with her.
Okay, then we need to move the, uh.
Move the meeting?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
That's fine. Okay, what's the next option?
Want to work for our audience?
So you say, you, you, okay, you're talking the fifteenth?
Fifteenth of August.
Fifteenth of August, okay. Fifteenth of August is a Friday. Okay, so you have a court date. When? August what?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth, that's the other day.
That's the date that discusses this. I don't believe there's a court date.
So. So you can move your court date?
Move the court date for what, sir?
So that we get a report. You can't give us a report by the fifteenth.
No, I have to, I have to get the court a report by the fifteenth. We were more than happy to get it this morning.
Oh.
I can get it.
Okay.
I couldn't do it by the fifth. I couldn't promise your report by the fifteenth. So Tuesday after?
Yeah, he gives, uh, probably the week before the fifteenth.
We'll have to move that. Can you get it to us by the twelve?
You want the report of the engineer, the, the elevation shots is what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Then I can get you by August the fourth.
Is that all, is that all you need is elevation?
Yeah. And, and maybe some big pictures of this so we can lay our eyes on it.
In the, uh, in the, in the, this is further discussion here. In the court for the injunction, the, uh, the, uh, preliminary injunction, I believe that's what it's called?
Yes, sir.
The, the judge asked that the culvert be restored. Wait a second, my eyes are not working right here. Either a particular date. Let's see. That the culvert be restored to, to, uh, to the, to August first, twenty twenty-three. That the way it existed prior to August first, twenty twenty-three. Has that been done?
This is.
Okay. In, in, in your report, could you could the engineer let us know whether it's been restored?
Yes, we were, we are going tomorrow to take a look at the whole property and we will, we will advise the board of the elevation shots in and around the culvert. And I'm not clear on how far north, but I'll give you what we have, all the elevation shots. And if you wish to call the engineer, if you want the engineer to explain things, then we need to give them notice ahead of time and bring it back.
Oh, if we could see those other dimensions.
Okay, so what, what day are we talking here? Twelve, there's the eight, so twelve, so.
Twelve, August twelve is what he said.
That's what, that's what we agreed to.
August twelve.
Inside of Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, would you like to restate your motion again, please?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table till August twelve. And, uh, with pictures and, uh, elevations and stuff like that.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
This board, your board, has the authority to compel witnesses to appear. And you could compel the engineer to appear on the twelfth. You might want to add that in as a separate motion.
With respect, I do believe the engineer would, would come voluntarily if, if that would be contested.
No, wait a second. The engineer, current engineer, okay?
Mr. Daudrell.
Mr. Who?
Eric Daudrell.
Yes, uh, he has been refused from everything, uh, due to conflict of interest.
The, Mr. Daudrell was, is the next door neighbor to the prior judge's magistrate. And so the prior judge said, he didn't, he, since my magistrate is next door neighbor with the new engineer, I think I need to get out of this case. And Judge Towne then said, I think the whole building needs to get out of it, and that's why we have the judge.
So the whole building's out of it, therefore the engineer is also out of it, am I not correct?
The, the engineer is allowed to testify because the new judge doesn't have any conflict of interest.
Okay. Okay. We need a vote. We have a second, yeah.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Bill and saving.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we're make place burger. Oh, we'll get to that. Anything else? Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Judge makes a motion to adjourn. Give me a second, give me a second.
Dean.
It's open.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes. Yes.
Bill and saving.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.